Good evening. My name is Andy Cripps, CEO of the Effingham County Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to the 2020 Board of Education Candidates Forum presented by the Chamber and the Effingham Herald. We're glad you could join us for what we hope will be an informative discussion. This forum will introduce candidates seeking a four-year term on the Effingham County Board of Education, serving District Two and District Three. Election Day for the Board of Education seats is June 9th with early voting beginning next Monday, May 18th. Also on the ballot are a contest to fill the remaining term of Georgia State Senator Jack Hill, serving Georgia's 4th District, as well as a contested local race for Clerk of the Superior Court, races for Georgia Supreme Court Justice, a referendum reauthorizing the education special purpose local option sales tax, as well as Democratic and Republican primary contests to select candidates for President, the US Senate and House of Representatives, among others. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this forum and one later this evening with candidates for the State Senate are being conducted remotely via Zoom and streamed live on the Chamber of Commerce's Facebook page. We want to thank all of the participating candidates and you for bearing with us and understanding the limitations of this online video technology. We hope you'll forgive any technical glitches in the program. Now I'd like to introduce the moderator for this evening's forum, Mark Lastinger, editor of the Effingham Herald.
Good evening, everybody. I also welcome you and I hope you'll find that this event will be fruitful for you. I hope it'll be fruitful for the candidates. As Mr. Cripps mentioned, this is very unusual for the candidates. It's going to be difficult or has been difficult for them to campaign. They can't go to the clubs in the county and try to meet constituents. They can't go door to door. So this is a really good chance for them and it's a really good chance for you and we appreciate you viewing it with us. As we get ready to proceed, we're going to have the District Two candidates first. The incumbent is Troy Alford and the challenger is Chelsea McNichol. And the way this is going to work is we're going to give them a couple of minutes to give an introduction and then we'll start the questions. I've got about 12 questions I'm going to ask. Mr. Alford will get the first question. Ms. McNichol will get the second question first and then we'll just rotate back and forth who answers first. So, okay, we'll start now. Mr. Alford, your introduction, please.
Thank you, Mark, very much. And good evening and afternoon, folks. Hope everybody is well during this horrible pandemic. We've all been fighting throughout this whole, not just this country, but this whole world. So continue to pray for everybody and we'll continue to do so as well. I am Troy Alford. I am the incumbent for the Effingham County Board of Education, serving and representing District Two. I moved here in 1988. My wife and I raised four beautiful kids, who, by the way, have all gone through the Effingham County school system. All have great jobs as we speak. Actually, two of them are teachers. I've got one in the yachting world and one in the lighting business. I'm forever grateful for all for them and the job they've done. People ask me from time to time, what I feel like where I've made a difference in just my one vote, you know, we actually have five votes, votes on most everything that we, we policies and procedures as well as hirings in the district. And people ask me all the time, Alford, why do you want to run again? What do you have left? And Mark, as I mentioned to you back in March when we did a story for the Effingham, with the Effingham, your Effingham Herald, you know, I made mention about teamwork and if you've got a team that can get the job done, I'm here to tell you I serve on that team that is getting it done and has gotten it done. But we're on a journey and that journey has got to continue. Some of the things that I would like to just share in this brief opening is I look back at some of the things that we have done and accomplished and one of them was that's my passion was classroom sizes. We've kept that to a minimum over the years. We finally got that in control. I think about transportation with all buses. Every bus that we use right now has not only cameras on them, but they also have videos on. So we have both two and one. I think about the security systems that we put. Recently, the vestibules with all these shootings going on throughout this country. That has been horrible. I mean, the stories have been, and you folks out there know what I'm talking about. We put security vestibules in all of our schools now. So I'm feeling more secure. We've raised the the resource officers from one to two in the middle schools and that was a big, that was a big change for us. And it's all adapting very, very well. So again, I got to tell you, this is a journey. I want to continue to live the journey and let me just take one quick second and this right here, folks that are watching, this right here is what incumbent Troy Alford is about. My four kids, your kids, and here's four grandchildren that'll be going through this same school system in the coming years. That's why incumbent Troy Alford is seeking another term for the Effingham County Board of Education District Two. Thank you, Mark and Andy, for being a part of this and allowing this to happen tonight.
Okay. Good evening and thank you for doing this and thanks for all of my supporters that are watching. I'm Chelsea McNichol. I have two boys that go to South Effingham Elementary School. One is going to first grade and one's going to fifth grade. I am not from, originally from Effingham, but I do live, work and worship in the community and I have grown to love this community. My family and I have assimilated into this community and I always want what's best for this community. I think I have a great plan for what I would like to accomplish if elected to school board. And you can see that in the Effingham Herald. You can see it on my Facebook page. I understand the challenges that parents and teachers face in educating our children and I'll bring forward ideas and discussions that will improve our lives. So I feel that I have a vested interest being a parent and I honestly feel that a school board should be representative of the community that it serves. And so I feel that I have fresh eyes and I have a lot of connections to the community and I feel that I would represent District Two well. We need new board members with new ideas to take a step forward and address some very important needs such as traffic. My son has 30 children in his class and that is too large. As well as student health, I think we have a lot of great programs such as telemedicine that we just need to make sure that we market so that parents know that it's available. And I think one thing for sure on the south end, we need a school and we need it now. We don't need it in two years. We need it. We need to have it now. And, you know, I know that that is something that's important to Mr. Alford. But I hear every day parents complaining about traffic and it's not getting any better. So I think that's something that I could help with and I think that it's the class size for sure is another thing. If you've read my campaign, I think that I will give a different set of eyes. I am, I am representative of this community. There's a lot of young families with children in the school system and so I think that we need, especially need an elementary school parent on the school board. So thank you for doing this, Mark, and if elected, I think that I will make District Two proud.
Okay. Before we get to the first question, this is something I forgot to mention. In any of the three races that we have tonight, if one candidate says something that the other one wants to address directly, then we will have some back and forth on that. We will set some time aside. So right now we'll go with question one. Mr. Alford, you addressed a good bit of this in your opening remarks, but what is it that motivates you to want to be a school board member?
Oh, wow. Great question. Thank you, Mark. To have already seen so many of the changes when I first got on this board, and again, Mark, this is just not all about me. It's about that same team that you and I talked about back in March. But we're doing such a great job, I feel like now with our kids. I mean, when I came here, there were some 10,000 students. Today, as we speak and have this debate, we have over 12,000. It's like 12,305. We continue to grow during the summer months as we move into every fall to start school again. You heard me earlier when I opened up that I'm on this journey and a journey consists of a lot of things. I want to work closer with the Effingham County Commission to see if we can get a fine arts auditorium going. There's just so many more things that we want to do out there and I'm just not going to give up doing it until we get more done. That's what motivates me. I guess maybe that's why they call me coach sometime on the side. Because it motivates me because I'm making a difference and if my job, if I can make a difference in one child's life out of the 12,000 we've got, then incumbent Troy Alford has done his job.
Okay. Ms. McNichol?
Um, I will say what motivates me also would be I've been on the school council for the last two years and I've seen a lot of things that I think could have been done differently and I think that after a certain amount of time that you become complacent and I think you know, I can complain about traffic all day long and, but at the end of the day, I moved here for this school system because it's great. And I think the school board has done a great job, but at some point, we need new people to come and ask questions and bring new ideas to make us stay competitive. And I do think that, you know, I know that a lot of people are upset about how close Blandford is to some of the recent developments and I feel like that should have never happened. And I think that you know, it takes me 45 minutes to get to 95 some mornings from where I live and I live right behind the school. We have to focus on the south end of the county. We need a school and we don't need it off of Highway 21. The county owns so much property off of highway, what is it? Not Goshen, Hodgville Road. And that's where we need a school. So we need to make that happen and we need to do it now. I mean, my child was in pre-K at South Effingham Elementary School and they had a cubicle in the, or a portable in the back that we went to, but then this year we had absolutely no pre-K at South Effingham Elementary. And these children are being bused in all of this traffic to Rinkin Elementary where they have more than enough room. So I think that first of all, and the teachers are being bused over there with them at seven o'clock in the morning where traffic is the worst. And so I decided that if I wanted to make a difference, then I needed to run for school board and the education of my children, I think that I need to be involved and I think that I represent this community. I am the average person that lives in District Two. So I think that we need to have a proper plan in place for the growth and we don't need any more industry here that aren't paying taxes on anything. We need to be prepared before we allow this to happen. We don't have the infrastructure in place as it is right now. And I think as a school board, we need to work to ensure that we have the proper infrastructure in place. And that's what motivates me is that I can, I can complain all day long or I can do something about it and I can and I can run. So that's what motivates me for sure.
May I rebuttal right there, please, if you will?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think what I'm hearing from Ms. McNichol is traffic issues. I've been serving 16 years. I've got no control. My Board of Education has no control over traffic. That is a Board of Commissioners. It needs to be fed to the Effingham, our friends, who we work very closely with, by the way. This needs to be fed to the Effingham County Board of Commissioners. The only thing your principal can do at any schools, all 13 schools, is try to make it better within the facility. As far as the traffic out in the roads, Effingham County Board of Education has absolutely zilch control over that. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next question. And Ms. McNichol, you get this one first. What skills or experiences do you have that you think would make you an effective school board member?
Well, I have 12 years of experience in business development. I worked at Aiken Technical College. I was, I did training there with many students. I worked at Savannah Technical College. I worked at the Industrial Development Authority, which gave me a lot of insight in how this community works. And I also I am very active in this community and I also have been on the school board for, not school board, school council for two years. And I, I know what parents want and what they need and I hear it every day. So, and you know, I understand that the school board doesn't make decisions on behalf, on traffic. I get it. However, if we don't have the schools in place for these companies, it's our, for the amount of people that are going to be moving here and the projected growth, then that is our responsibility. And our kids being bused to Rinkin Elementary for pre-K is not, is not something that I think should have happened. We should have had a school large enough to facilitate a pre-K for those children and we didn't. And so I understand that it's not the Board of Education's right to improve traffic, but I do know that they were brought to the table at some of these, some of these meetings about the developments by Blandford and I don't understand how we allowed this to happen. So you know, especially after some of the things that Ebenezer parents addressed with different situations that have came up in the past. So
I just want to say, we're going to get into some of these issues with questions later. So just try to, if we both would just focus on the question at hand and instead of drifting off a little bit because we will get into some of these issues that you're talking about.
All right. I didn't get a chance to rebuttal. So.
Well, what do you want to rebut?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, I understand that the school board does not control the traffic. I am well aware of that, but I think we have to, you know, and I know that Troy Alford works great with all of the people and I have a lot of respect for you, Mr. Alford. I'm just saying that I am not scared to have a voice and I'm not saying you are, but I'm saying that I know that a lot, I'm not from here and I think that is why I need to be elected. We need to get someone different and I would run against anyone on the, in this district. Well, I think we need someone my age. I think we just need someone that represents this community, who is one of the community. I am the average person in this district and that's why most of people live here. It's for the schools. And there aren't a lot of locals that live in this area. It's different than the rest of Effingham County.
Yes, that puts me in on average. I don't know, Mark. But you want to ask, we can move on with the question and if you don't mind, can you read it out again, please?
Okay. Just what skills and experiences qualify you to be a school board member?
First of all, I'm a complete motivator. That's for sure. I'm a very concerned person of the community. I don't think there's one person, I don't think there's any one situation in the 16 years that I have been serving. And if I am, I'm going to apologize tonight and then ask that person or those people, certain people to give me a call and let me know and try to fix whatever it was. I've never not attacked a situation or a concern of anybody in our school system, from the superintendent to the teachers, the staff and parents of this whole community. So I would have to say I'm very concerning or concerned person and like to attack what's being dealt to me, whether it's good or whether it's bad. We don't always agree. But I'm going to tell you, I, with the county commission, but I'm here to tell you that I will do anything I can to continue to serve these people of this district of Effingham County.
All right. Well, it seems like this debate between you two, it comes down to, I've heard it called old blood versus new blood. So I'm going to ask you the same question, but with a different twist. And you get to go first this time. You're, you're the old blood. How does that benefit you? And then I'll ask Ms. McNichol, being the new blood, how does that benefit you and how will it benefit our school system?
Ah, ah, great, great question, Mark. And first of all, I'd like to say that the 60 now, though I'm 58, is the new 40, by the way, Ms. McNichol. Anyway, having said that, when I look back and I talk about this team, again, like I keep referring back to your story, Mark, back in March. And I think about the team that we've got. The chairman Lamar Allen and I have been on the same course for 16 years. Vicki Decker, who serves District Five over in the Silverwood, Silverwood area. She's been on for 11 or 12 years. And then we've got two of the newest comers, who, by the way, are younger people and one of them is District One, which is Lynn Anderson, who beat out Mr. Grant a couple of years ago. And of course, Ben Johnson, who's been on for about eight months. So I don't really know their exact ages, but I can tell you this, they are fresh blood. I actually don't get that to happen to me very often. But again, I'm here to tell you, we can, we can agree to disagree. But we've got some young blood and new blood on the Effingham County Board of Education. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. McNichol?
Okay. When you say new blood, I I'm not aware of new blood that's on the Board of Education right now.
You've only been to one meeting. It's probably why.
Okay. Well, we haven't had any meetings since I've been running. So and I read all of the notes, but anyways. So I would say new blood. I have a different perspective. I've worked with the school systems in South Carolina and I am working with them in other counties in the state of Georgia right now. You know, everybody knows that if you don't have a certain last name, then you, you're not a Salzburger. I mean, I hear it a lot, but I'm not going to go there. I want to keep this lighthearted. Obviously, I think we need fresh eyes. I think we need someone with a different perspective. We need and the well-being, our children should not be judged by their last name. They should have, let me ask you this, Mr. Alford. Are you, are you aware of what, let me ask you this, what schools participate in the Special Olympics? What elementary schools?
Well, let's see. You talking about year by year or just now? Okay. Well, South Effingham has over the years. There's a time or two when Sandhill did, not quite sure when it was. Let's see, who else? Rinkin never has.
I'll just stop right there. It's, South Effingham Elementary does not participate in the Special Olympics because we don't have a class that facilitates children with those, that level of needs. So they did not participate last year because we don't have a classroom.
I said they have participated before. You've only been here four years. So I've been here 16. So that makes a difference. Maybe not in the last four.
We're getting away from the question again.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
So let's, let's again, try to answer the question because there are a lot of other questions to come and we may get into what you want to talk about, both of you. And this is going to be a good one right here, probably to air concerns, Ms. McNichol. I think it's your turn to go first. There are some huge decisions that the school board is going to have to make shortly because of this COVID-19 pandemic. We're bound to take some massive hits financially. And, but when you look at this, the school system, where do you think the issues are that need to be prioritized? And it sounds like certainly what you said earlier, you think traffic's one of them. But what else are issues that you think need to be prioritized right now?
Well, I think we need to make sure that our schools have the safety measures in place. I think that we need to, hopefully it'll all be gone by the time school starts back. And they've done a great job adapting, but I think one thing that we need to do is we need to, we need to make sure that we understand technology. I think that's another issue that I can really help with. I think that we all can tell from the last few months how teachers have adopted so well to technology. And it was very hard because we weren't ready to do any of this. And so I think that's something that we need to, and we did it well. It worked great for others. A lot of children didn't have what they needed to be able to log in online and take classes, but I think we need to definitely freshen up on our technology and have a plan in place, a disaster plan in place for something like this. And I think we need to have, we need to have protective gear in case something like this happens again. And I think, you know, I don't, I don't know, hopefully the numbers are going down. So hopefully we won't have to worry about the coronavirus in the next few months and when school starts, but and maybe we want to, you know, if that's, if we have to postpone and do something online, I think we need to have a plan in place for, especially for children who, you know, aren't prepared to have a Chromebook. But there needs to be a disaster plan in place and I think a lot of businesses have realized that. This is something that we've never had to deal with in our lifetime. But I think that's very important because who knows when the next time we're going to have to leave class and not see our teachers anymore. And it's just, that's something that I think we need to do. And I think that's something that I could help with, especially from a technology point of view, bringing up new ideas and different ways that we can teach our classrooms.
Okay, Mr. Alford?
We have the absolute best technology department that we've had in the history of Effingham County. It's led by Jeff Laracy, who does a phenomenal, not a good job, not a great job, a phenomenal job. We've put more technology personnel in our high schools. We've put in a few more in our elementary and our middle schools. They do a fabulous job. I can assure you one thing. I agree with Ms. McNichol about one thing she said moments ago. We've never experienced something like this in our lives and I hope and pray to my Lord and Savior that we never have to do it again. But I can tell you this, we'll be more prepared than any other district in this state with the type of technology people we have going in this, in this district now, led by Mr. Laracy. There will be no old stones that hadn't been overturned. I can promise you. That's how strong I feel about this awesome techni, we don't need no more technology people. We've got all we need. We got the best.
Okay. Any other priorities that you think need to be focused on right now?
Oh, I definitely think, and we've been, we've actually been focused on them. And, you know, during this pandemic, we don't know where we're heading as we move towards the fall. But I can also tell you, I'm learning about schools more and more on a daily basis. For example, our folks over in Statesboro, you know, they're already starting to talk about furlough and start to talk about, maybe we should keep for the first semester, keep our kids home. And, you know, you're just learning so many things, Mark, by so many different people that you want to, you want to do what's right. But what I can guarantee you this is that we will be prepared come August when it's time to go back to school. I don't want to talk about homeschool right now. I want to see these kids go back, just like I want to see these seniors graduate on the stage. That's how, that's how determined I am. I'm only one vote, but I'm probably speaking for all four other board members.
Okay. All right. It's your turn to go first now.
I have one more thing that I'd like to add. I think it's important also that we, we have telemedicine in many schools. I think we need, if, if having tests for coronavirus is something that's easy to do, why not just get them and have them where they can test at the school? I think that's something that would be a great idea because it's a real issue and even though I want my kids to go back to school more than anybody, trust me. But I will tell you that a lot of people are scared of this virus and so it's, it's gonna, it's not going to be easy for some people. Some people are very scared and having something like that would make parents feel a lot more comfortable, for sure.
Yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have to have a new norm. I agree wholeheartedly.
Okay. This next question, Mr. Alford, is your turn to go first. What do you think people of Effingham County, what is it that they can be most proud of about our school system?
Oh, my gosh. First thing that comes to mind, Mark, and a great question again. Thank you. First thing that comes to mind is our graduation rates. When I won the election in 2004 and started my District Two seat in '05, January of '05, the graduation rate was just under 80%. Mark, I think I gave you those numbers back in March. It might've been 75, 78. But as we speak tonight and those who are listening, especially those voters of District Two, here's what I want to share with you. We're at 90.9% right now. The only reason this dropped two, two and a half, three percent over the last couple of years is we, we made a mistake, I think, and maybe out of, out of the board system, but not maximizing these classrooms, or should I say minimizing. All right. And I think about these elementary kids, you know, our kindergarten teachers, pre-K teachers, first grade, they don't need to teach more than 22, 23 kids max. And we've had 25, 27 and 28. I've had my hands on this, folks. I know what I'm talking about. Okay? I'm not going to say there weren't classrooms. I had 28 or 30. But I know one thing. I'm very proud to be able to sit before you folks tonight and tell you that is one thing I have focused on and that is one reason why the parents want to continue to get their kids educated in our district.
I'll say I think we should be most proud of our great teachers and administrators, for sure. I know many teachers and many teachers in Chatham County and teachers are willing to make less to work in Effingham County because the schools and the administration is so great. So I think that's something to be said for Effingham County Board of Education. The ability to adapt to this pandemic, the way that we have, has been amazing. I mean, the teachers are available. They have, they had to put all of their lesson plans online within what, not even a week? It's been phenomenal. It's been phenomenal to see how the community really worked together, and the teachers really did a great job, and I think we should be proud to have the staff that we have.
Okay, it's your turn to go first. Individually, a school board member has no power. It takes the board as a group to make a move, make a decision. So what do you think? How would you contribute to an effective, smooth operation for the board?
Well, I think it.
Go ahead. I wasn't sure who was asking.
So how would I contribute to smooth operating school system, school board? I would say that I never think that I'm always right. I like to listen to other people's opinions. I like to be open-minded. I, that's how I learn. I think that bringing these parents' concerns before the school board and trying to see all different types of points of view. But I think my, I think that I I'm very likable, and I think that easy to get along with, and I think that I would be a great team player, for sure. So.
That's what it takes. That's for sure. Mark, can you repeat the question? I'll make sure I heard exactly what you please.
Since an individual board member really has no power, it has to be done as a unit. And I've covered boards and city councils for years. A lot of times, even though they might be behind closed doors, there might be a five to one split. When it gets time to vote, they'll vote unanimously just to pose a united front. And so what I'm trying to say is, how do you? How would you contribute to a smooth, effective operation, you know, with the board and the school system?
First of all, let me say another great question, loving them more and more as you as you make the call. We got the finest teachers that I think this district could ever ask for in the state of Georgia. I myself know a ton of them, friends with some of them, have some business relationships with some of them from a standpoint of being able to work with them. It's tough sometimes. You're exactly right, Mark, when you said it. It you hold no power outside that boardroom. However, when you get on the inside and you can voice your opinion. And I probably mentioned this earlier, and if I didn't, we we the board members, we agree sometimes to disagree. But I'm I'm going back to your your story back in March. When we disagree, at the end of that meeting, we all know that there's love in the room and our respect for each other, right, wrong, or whoever won a particular vote for a hiring procedure. We're friends, and we walk out of there, and we act respectful to each other, and I think that's important. Now, back to your question, I think the teachers that we got have do, again, do a phenomenal job. We got so many of them, I wouldn't trade them for the world. This pandemic does scare me about how how further we can go into hiring anymore. But I do believe in my heart of hearts that we do have the best set of teachers, with some great leadership, might I add, that's teaching our kids. And as far as I'm concerned, if reelected, I'll I'll promise you I'll continue to be a part of that and make sure that we make the right decisions the best that we can, even though we do agree to disagree. Thank you.
It's your turn to go first again. Now, this has come up a couple of times during this debate tonight. What should be, what should we be doing to tackle this growing enrollment that that y'all have been talking about? What do we need to do?
You said tackle it. What do you mean by tackle it?
Just to handle it, you know, I know that there's a couple of schools being discussed to be built, but, you know, how do we handle this? Because apparently, we're going to get a few hundred students every year for the foreseeable future.
Right. Well, I think, you know, doing enrollment is something. Who's first? I'm sorry.
Is it your turn, Chelsea?
Go ahead, please.
You go ahead, Chelsea, if you want to.
Okay. Okay, so I think to tackle this growth, we are going to need to make sure that we have proper. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, you just got out. Okay, we need to have the roads in place, and that would be working those relationships with county and local officials to get that done. We have got to we have to make this a priority. We have to, we need to have a property now that we can build a school on. I don't, and I don't understand for the life of me why we can't build a school on Hodgeville Road. I just don't understand it. That's where we need it. We don't need it off of Highway twenty-one, where we have lots of big trucks that we're continuing to throw up warehouses. The Shaw Industries right behind that. We also need to confirm that our residents are the only ones that are attending this school. I mean, I see Chatham County tags all day long at the schools. So that's something that we really need to, we need to verify that. That's important. And then also, you know, we need to look at our school choice policies, and we also need to make sure that we have the proper infrastructure. And I think that's a valid concern that we can bring before different, you know, we are the, so the roads are what? They get four, I think they get two percent of the tax basis. Or when I pay my taxes, two percent of that goes to roads and infrastructure. We need to look at what these people are doing with these funds, and we need to make sure that if we are offering jobs that are low-wage jobs, then we need to look at, are these people paying taxes when they're building these companies? We need to make sure that they're playing a part and not leave it all on the school to put the infrastructure in place because they're using our schools when they're moving here. So that's something that we really need to make sure that we're communicating that to all of the different parties, and it's something that I feel really strongly about. If we have the, you know, there's what, the hospital, the Development Authority, they the county, we all pay taxes to these people. Are we using those funds to support the infrastructure that's directly affecting our school system? And I think that's something that we can do to prepare. And if we had the roads in place, it would be great, but right now we don't. And so I think it's just working together as a community to express these concerns and making sure that before we build another huge neighbor of the neighborhood off of Goshen Road, that we have a school for these children to go to, because right now we don't. And so that's, I think I've said enough about that, so I'll I'll stop there.
I'm going to help you. Mark, can I go ahead and comment here? It's not even rebuttals, the facts. And Miss McNichol, again, I would all do respect. I'm kind of sitting here thinking, did you really run for school board for the right reasons? These these issues that you're bringing up, majority of them seem to be Board of Commissioner issues. I'd be more than happy to address. We have friends. We are all friends on the Effingham County and Board of Education and Commissioners, but we don't have that say-so. We don't, we right here before long are going to meet with them about this auditorium, this fine arts auditorium, to see if they'll go in some with us. The elementary school that you want to build, no one didn't, no one didn't build the arc overnight. We are, we do, we are in process to build another elementary school on the south end of the county within the next twenty-four months. I don't want to say too much about that, but I've heard Miss McNichol talk how bad we need one. Sure, we do. That's why we went out and redistrict our zoning area two years ago, and before that, we had done it five years. We plan ahead. That's where I give tons of credit to Dr. Randy Scherous to get things going early on, so that when he makes a decision, this is where we need to go, then we meet as a board, and that's where pretty much we're going. So I will tell you, folks who are listening in, and you as well, Miss McNichol, there'll be another elementary school built within the next twenty-four months. It does not happen overnight. I can promise.
Right. I understand that, but I will, my rebuttal to that is, why did we let the pre, those babies on the road go into Rinkin Elementary every day? Because we didn't have a preschool, and this isn't a new problem. We haven't had one for many, many years. So I think that we need a strategic plan in place. We need to look at the numbers, the statistics. Have a lot of experience with economic data, and I, so I I agree, I think that we have not.
We're adding on. I I respect what you're trying to say. I just don't think it's it's coming out right. That's all.
All right, I've got about three or four more questions, and I think this has been great, but we're going to have to fast forward because we've got the other group coming in. So what I would like for y'all to do now is, Mr. Alfred, you go first to go ahead and offer your closing remarks.
Okay, I will. I did want to make mention real quick that South Effing Elementary has already started and is getting close to completion. I was actually by there yesterday adding on the trailers on that school so that we can go ahead and accommodate those students while we preparing to build our next elementary school. In closing, again, folks, I I am Troy Alfred. I am the incumbent. I have worked hard on this board. My heart lies in Effingham County. I tell everybody all the time that I I was born a gross high school rebel, and I will die a South Effingham boy. And what I mean by that is I'm in this district. I am serving District Two. I have served you folks for sixteen-plus years. I want to continue my journey. I want you to be a part of it. I want these four and many, many others to be a part of it. I'm your man. If I have insulted anybody tonight or in the past, please, woman up, man up, I'm begging you. Come to me, and I'll fight whatever issue you got. Might not make you happy right off the bat, but I can tell you this. Nobody out there will be able to tell you that incumbent Troy Alfred will not go to bat for your kids. So vote, go to the polls on June ninth and vote incumbent Troy Alfred back in as Vice Chairman of the Effingham County Board of Education, serving District Two.
Thank you. And I will just say that over the past few months, I've had a wonderful opportunity to sit down with a lot of Effingham residents, administrators, leaders. One supporter is Donald Brandt, who is a former Board of Education member who has also coached me with some things. I love this community as well. I I work here. I live here. I invested here. I bought a house here. I want to raise my family and put roots here, and I absolutely love Effingham County. I feel like, like I said, I think we need new blood. I think we need someone who's representative of the community. And I think that, you know, that is, that is me, and I would I would encourage you to take a look at my Facebook page and also, you know, look at what I stand for and vote on June ninth, and thank you very much for doing this tonight, Mark.
Yeah, Mark, thank you to you and and Andy as well with the Chamber, the CEO of the Chamber. Thank y'all very much. I'm glad we was able to do this. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much for participating in this and for a very frank discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. God bless y'all.
Good night. And and thank you, Mark. It's just going to take a minute while I bring the other candidates in, but it'll just be a short pause here. All right, unfortunately, Mr. Jacoby Jones, who is also a candidate for the District Three seat, has not logged in at this point. If he does log in, I will bring him into the discussion, but these are the candidates available right now. And again, I want to turn it over to Mark Lasting here.
Okay, gentlemen, I really appreciate you guys participating in this. I think it'll be very good for the for the voters. Hopefully, it'll be very good for you. And the way this is going to work is, here in a second, I'll give you a couple of minutes to introduce yourselves to our listeners. And then we'll start the questions. We'll go alphabetical order with the first question, and then after that, we'll just rotate who goes first. So the same person doesn't always have the advantage of answering the question last. So, Mr. Allen, let's start with you and have you introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mark. Hello, my name is Lamar Allen. I'm running for reelection to Third District Board Education. I've been on the board for sixteen years, eleven years as that is chairman. Our system has grown a lot in those, in a lot of ways in those fifteen, sixteen years. Size, graduation rate, test scores. We've been through a downturn. And everything went, when everything went south, we did not have any layoffs. We didn't cut programs. Now it just looks like it's coming back again. I have a wonderful family, had grandkids in the school system, and would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, Mr. Graham goes next.
How you doing?
All right.
Hi, just wanted to say, everybody, I'm Ron Graham. Born and raised right here in Effingham County in the Third District. Been here all my life. Born and raised right here. All three of my four grandparents from right here in Effingham County, one from Scriven. My wonderful wife of twenty years, also born and raised right here in District Three. Got three wonderful kids. One, oldest one is a rising junior in high school. My middle one is a rising sophomore, and then I have a little girl that's been going to first grade. I just, first, I'm thankful for the opportunity to even be here. Like I say, been here all my life. Love Effingham County. Never go anywhere else. Just appreciate the support that I've already got from phone calls, texts, you know, from from people, and just, I feel like I've had my own business here going on twenty years, successful, got a little business background. Would like to have an opportunity to help further the excellence of of our school system here in Effingham County and was appreciate any support that I can get from here on out.
Yes, again, my name is Brad Johnson. I'm not originally from Effingham. I'm from Savannah. Moved up here with my family in ninety-two. We've lived here in Springfield for the last four years in this current house. About ten years before that, I'm a local business owner. I started a Johnson Financial Solutions CPA firm, June of two thousand seventeen. And now that I'm, you know, I've got several nieces and nephews that have either been through the school systems or are currently in the school systems and will be going through school systems. I've, through my three boys. My oldest son Ethan graduated from Effingham High School last year, two thousand nineteen. My middle son's a big coming senior at Effingham, and my youngest son will be a freshman at Effingham starting next school year. So just want to get back to the community, and same as Ron said, thank everybody for the support. That's basically it.
Okay, sure. Then we'll start with a questioning. And, Mr. Allen, you get to go first. What skills and experience qualify you to to be a school board member?
All right. I think experience is hard to get around. I have been through the good and the bad with the school system, with the school system. We have two new board members who can give us insight if we need it. We have a good board that works together, and that's what makes a great board. I would like to keep it that way. I just think that my years going through the hard times and coming like we did, and now we're to come back again. I think we need experience on the board to be able to handle that. And I'd like to keep, I'd like to keep our board intact. I think it does a great job working together and and, but I think, I mean, everything has gone good. I mean, our county has just grown leaps and bounds in in the fifteen years, sixteen years I've been on the board. Test scores have gone up from all all the way up and graduation rates from sixty-nine to ninety-one. I mean, I don't know. Hopefully, we can get better, but everything is, everything is going good, and I think experience has got a lot to do with that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Graham, you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, what skills or experiences do you have that qualify you to be a school board member?
Well, I mean, I don't know a lot about the inside business part of the school system at this point. Granted, I didn't know a lot about that with the business that I'm in now, you know, almost twenty years in my business. Been pretty successful in a business that's hard to hard to deal with and run, and I I feel like school board is is kind of like running a business. And I've met and deal with and communicate with a lot of people in the business that I'm in, and I feel like that I'm open-minded, non-biased type of person. I feel like anybody could come to and talk to as far as students, parents, faculty and staff, you know, I mean, and I'm not here just to represent District Three. I'd like to be here to help for for. District Three. I'd like to be here to help for, for all the other districts, feel free to, to reach out, touch me, you know, communicate with me and, and try and address any issues we have. Again, I think we have an excellent school system. I'm, I'm not here to knock anybody or anything that anybody's done. I just with my children being in the school and I'm here, I'm not going anywhere. I would just like to have a, a voice to help continue along with the excellence that we set as a standard in our school system here in Effingham County.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, being a CPA, I've worked with companies with financial issues and worked with committees and I've been on other boards in the past, presently serving on Church and Pastors Council at Rink and Church of God. And having the experience of bringing us a problem to the table and working through solutions and you know, admitting that you don't always have the best answer or the correct answer, but being able to work with different people and different opinions and ideas to come up with the right solution. And just, you know, for twenty something years, being able to do that and continue to do it successfully. And also, you know, during this, this pandemic, advising clients and helping them get through this situation with everything going on that is really right now unprecedented. That's, that would be my main qualifications.
Okay. All right, Mr. Graham, this question is for you first. If you're elected, what would you want to be the key accomplishment at the end of your full year term?
Again, I just, you know, just to continue moving forward with the, with our school system, with graduation rates, the excellence that we have in our schools. I mean, we have people pouring in our county, moving here, and it's really for one reason. It's, it's because of our school system. I mean, to me, it's without a doubt. I mean, we're steadily building houses every day. It's not fixing to slow down. And the reason why people are flocking here is because of our schools. I, for, for what I say what I have done in, you know, in forty years' time, I don't know. I mean, I don't know any one area we really need to improve on, you know? I, I don't know, like I say, all the ins and outs because I'm not in there to know where we really need to improve and where we don't need to improve. But I just would like to see it continue moving forward in an upward direction. And I mean, we're in a good place now. We need to continue to hire good teachers. I think we have good teachers, but teachers are the biggest, one of the biggest parts of our school system. I mean, teachers make a big influence on students. I mean, there's a lot of students that, that don't get the, the good influence that they need at home. And when you can spend, a teacher can spend an hour with, with students during the day. I mean, there's a lot of teachers that make, make a real good influence on students and where they go in their life. And we just, we just need to continue, continue in the direction we're going.
Okay, sure. Mr. Johnson?
I don't have any specific, you know, bullet points that I want to accomplish at the end of the four years. It's mainly coming in, becoming part of the team, building on the continued success that they've had. Moving it from where we are into the future with even more success, working with those in the school system administration, teachers, planning for the future growth of the county that's not only coming, but is already here. And, you know, once you get involved with it and figure out what all the issues are that are going on, then I think you can kind of nail it down as to what you would specifically want to work on and accomplish. But right now, it's just an overall contribution to the, to the school system.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
Okay, what I want to accomplish. Well, I've done a lot in fifteen years, sixteen years. I mean, mid-race rate way up. I mean, everything is going great. I would love to see, I would hope I can get four more years. If I do, I would love to see us get a hundred percent graduation rate. And we've got great teachers and I hope we keep great teachers. We've got good schools. Hopefully we can build more, more schools, good schools. And we just, things are just, I just, just want to see, see things stay like they are and, and do better because I think we're doing a great job here because I mean, you ask anybody when they come here why they come to this county and they'll tell you the school system. And they gonna keep coming because our school system is great and they gonna keep coming. And I would just like to see it stay that way. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Johnson? What are you, what are some of the priorities that you think the school district needs to address?
Again, I mean, I don't have anything specific at this point without having been involved in the details on what they're addressing right now. I think we do, as they mentioned in the District Two, we do need to look at in more schools and what the best location to put those at, working with the Board of Commissioners for the traffic and new road systems to handle the infrastructure. But I mean, that's the, you know, the graduation rates and making sure that students are actually prepared for life, you know, working in the financial industry, knowing what goes behind those rates and, and, you know, the, the actual meat, so to speak, of what the kids are learning and being taught. Are we actually, which I'm not saying we aren't, are we actually preparing them not just for college, but, you know, for life and special trades and that as well? I think we're doing a great job of that. But just continuing that, focusing on those areas and, you know, other areas that may pop up.
Okay. Mr. Allen, what do you think the immediate priorities are?
I can tell you the immediate priority is schools. And land, land is number one. We've got the, we've got a secure land, which is what we're, we're trying to do right now. Because then, well, it was three years, now it might be a little bit less than three years. We gotta have a elementary school. Five years, we need a, a middle school. And a big project right now we're working on is, is the bond, is the bond reform. And I mean, we, we need money to do all this. And the only way we, we can't, we can't make money. The state won't give us money. So we got to raise our own money. So bond issues got to pass because we, we got to, we got to build schools. And we're going, also, we're going to add on to some of these schools in, in District Two. And so we, we need to, we need that. But our priorities is to keep the schools running, running good and keep our teachers happy. And which we, teachers pay is high, if state is higher than the state average. And so, I mean, everything right now, we're trying to do everything we can to keep teachers, good teachers here.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Graham?
What was the question again?
What do you think the top priorities are for the school system right now?
Well, apparently it's growth, you know, and like I say, again, I mean, I'm not on the inside now to really know, but I mean, I know growth is a big issue. But once again, we're going to continue growth. We got all these people flocking in here because because of our school systems and, and where they are and how good they are on our teachers. And, and we just, you know, we need to be prepared to pull the trigger when it's time to purchase the land or whatever and start building. I mean, and I'm sure they're working on all in the balance that they're working on all that now. Um, we just, you know, that's, that's the big issue. We need to be prepared. I mean, it's also, you know, I mean, that's more tax dollars and all, which I mean, I know the board doesn't control where tax money comes from. That goes back on your commission. But growth is a big issue. And we just need to be, we need to be prepared as a, as a a group, a board, you know, to make the right decisions. So where we, where we need to build and what we need to do.
Okay. Well, Mr. Allen, it's your turn to go first again. The school system last year made a lot of improvements to safety. A lot of the schools got the vestibules and it, they seem to have worked out really great. Do you think there's anything else that needs to be done to enhance safety for our students?
There's, there's always a chance to improve. Safety is a major, major concern of all, all of us on the board and, and administrators and everybody else. Like you say, the vestibules worked great. We hired extra, extra police last year. And we tried something new. We've tried it at Sand Hill this year. Where all the doors are locked, you have to ring in and they will see who it is and they can let them in if, if they are, if they, if they are qualified to come in. But we hope we can get that in the rest of the schools. Very costly, but anyway, we were trying to, trying to do things to improve the safety of our schools.
Okay, Mr. Graham?
Again, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure exactly where we at on all the safety issues. I think we do a pretty good job. You know, like, you know, I'm, I'm sure we can improve. Same time, I'm, I'm sure that Sheriff McDuffie is more than willing to help out in any way he can to get more officers at the schools to, to, to help us in the needs that we have. You know, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I'm not sure exactly where we at. But there's definitely, you can improve on everything. I don't know if, what areas exactly we need to improve in, but I mean, nothing's perfect.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
The same, I mean, I, you know, I've heard that the system does work well, the vestibules and everything, the, the security plans. But I don't really know the details of all that yet. Again, I do believe, I agree with them that there is always room for improvement, always room to look at what you've done to see if it did work effectively. If there's tweaks or adjustments that need to be made, if there's something to go along with that or something that might need to be replaced. That's, that would be more getting involved in the details and looking at the overall existing plan and what the future plans may, may hold.
Okay. Mr. Graham, it's your turn to go first now. What responsibilities, if any, does the school district have for dealing with societal problems like hunger, poverty, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
Well, I mean, I think the, the schools, you know, we, we should be, we should help out in any way that we are able to and can afford to help out. You know, I don't know what kind of funds we have to help in certain things. I mean, I think the school has done a good job this year, just after this pandemic, yet to make sure some students that maybe the only meals they get during the day are the meals they get at school. And I think they did a good job of, of making sure that those students could go and get meals. You know, I mean, I, I really don't know. I mean, like I say, it's, it kind of comes down to a funding issue as far as what we can afford to do and, and what we can't. But I mean, I think we should always be willing to help everybody in any way we can if, if we're able to do it.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Okay. What responsibilities, if any, does the school district have for dealing with societal, societal issues like hunger, poverty, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
I think it's a very important responsibility that, that kind of makes up the entire teaching spectrum. I don't know how you can properly teach and educate children to be productive citizens in society if we're not addressing those issues. If we don't have, you know, special counselors for those, and we, we may have the programs in place, but special counselors are free and reduced lunch like we offer. You never know, you know, what children deal with when they leave schools. Sometimes that six, seven, eight hours at school is the best part of their day. And home life isn't the best for everybody. And you know, we minister to, to kids through our church for kids who don't have backpack, backpack buddies and, and other kids who don't have meals at night. And I think the school needs to come alongside that because those are the kids we're educating. And you can't just sit them in a classroom and focus on academics if we're not prepared to handle the entire aspect of their life.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
Okay. As far as hunger, of course, as you know, we're feeding kids now until the end of school. And then the community will take, take over. They have a problem during summer to feed these kids. Every, every one of our elementary schools has a backpack problem. And as far as the emotional and we team with United Way and we have, we have counselors and we're doing a social, emotional counselor. We're trying to hire more counselors to handle that part of it. Kids come to school with all kinds of problems and you have to address them best you can. And you have to have people that knows how to address them. And that's what we're trying to train, train all the time to do. But like I say, we, we work with different organizations to make sure everything is, is fed as best that we can. But the emotional part is, is, is a new part that's, that's come about that we have to address to keep kids.
All right, Mr. Johnson, it's your turn to go first. Now, if you were a board member and a parent approached you with a concern with a special needs child and they believe that the child's problem was kind of a system-wide issue, what would you do about it? How, how would you approach that to see that this parent's concern was satisfied?
Well, I'd like to get the facts from the parents and get their complete side of the story. I would collaborate with the other board members and see if this is a, a system-wide issue, what could be done, what possibly could be done, what has been done. Is it possible that, you know, it's, it's a problem that only exists for this one person? Is it made up? You know, there's all kinds of situations, but definitely you want to get all the facts and, and realize that there is two sides to every coin. And make sure that you're addressing everything as much as you possibly can within your power. As you noted earlier, you know, I'm one of, I would be one of, of other four board members. So you would bring the concern and, and see if you could push it through the best that you could and try and get in touch with the people that would be able to make that change if it was above and beyond what the board could do alone.
Okay, so you would go to the board first and not necessarily talk to a teacher or a principal? You would confer with the board? That, is that what you're saying? You would confer with them first?
Well, I mean, depending, I'm sorry, depending on the situation and what the facts are would determine who you would talk to first. If it's a situation that you said was system-wide, then the board would, yes, need to be brought into that to discuss if it really is a failure in our system across the county. But that's, who you would go to first depends on the situation. It's a case by case situation.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
Okay, let's start with, we don't have any control o, o, over, over this. It's not our job. I would send them to the right people to handle it. And we have people that in the schools and we have people in the board office with special ed that, that handles all this. And that's where, where we go. And superintendent would be the next one there. Fourth would never come to us. But if it's, if it's a, if it's a system-wide, then yeah, it, it needs to go to the special ed department and, and they need to look into it first.
Okay, Mr. Graham?
Well, I mean, there's, that's an issue that, like I said earlier, I mean, I, I'd like, feel like I'm open to for anybody to call me and, and, you know, and, and speak with me about any issues they have countywide, not just my district, but at the same time, that's an issue that I will probably have to send, address with the superintendent. And let superintendent go down the line with the principal and, and teachers and, you know, and, and address that. There's a chain of command that you have to go through with everything I'm aware of. And, and that's, you know, I'll feel like you would go to the superintendent first and try and let him get the issue worked out. And then if it was an issue that got real deep and came to the board, then it would come to the board and be voted on.
Okay, Mr. Allen, it's your turn. Other than attending board member, attending board meetings, is there anything that you do or would do to hear parental concerns?
Yes, because you won't hear a lot of parents concerned in board meetings. I try to go to, to the schools just to, just to visit. I have no authority when I go. I just go there to visit, have those any turns. I try to go to ball games. I go to every event I go to to try to give people a chance to talk to them. And if they got a concern, I'm, I'm always willing to listen. And I will break them where it needs to go. Because as a board member, I, I can't do anything like people think I can, but it's, it's, you got to be three people in the board for you to think it'd be done. And, but it, it needs to go to the proper chain of command. And get it, get it that way.
Mr. Graham, let's see, it's Mr. Johnson. This is Mr. Johnson's turn. Have you answered that question? I got, got lost.
No, sir, I haven't. Can you repeat it?
Yeah, okay. Other than attending, I guess it's Mr. Graham. Other than attending, I guess it's Mr. Graham's turn. He hadn't answered his question. We'll get, let's give Mr. Graham a shot first. Other than by attending, by attending board mem- board meetings, is there anything you would do to, uh, hear parental concerns?
Uh, again, I'm open, you know, uh, anybody feel free to give me a call, shoot me an email, text, um, I'm, I'm here, I'm an open ear, willing to listen, uh. Feel like I'm, have unbiased, uh, opinion on things. I mean, I, I'm here. You know, I want to be here to support our students as well as our teachers. Um, you know, I, I like, I think Mr. Johnson mentioned in a question earlier, I mean, there's, there's, there's two sides to every coin. And you have to listen to get all the facts from, uh, from, from parents, from students, from teachers. Um, you know, and I just would, you know, feel like I'd be open to, for any, any phone calls, any emails, you know, in public. I mean, I, you know, I, people on here just watching to know me, I mean, I, I'm, I'm a sponsor, uh, Effingham County sponsor, uh, booster, uh, I go to football games, I go to basketball games, you might see me at a softball game, you will see me at most any baseball game. I mean, I, you know, feel free, uh, if you see me, you got an issue, come up and, you know, get in my ear.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, you know, make yourself available, phone calls, email. Uh, my kids are active in sports and the band, uh, wear it up every football game, uh, with the marching band, uh, baseball games. My youngest son plays basketball for the rec department. Uh, we're very involved in the community. And if you don't know how to get directly in touch with me and, you know, call board and find out how to get our, the school system and, and try and find out or ask somebody, I'm, I'm always open and willing to talk.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Graham, it's your turn to go first. Uh, you sound like you're a big sports fan, uh, you know, in, in what kind of school activities have you been involved in over the years?
Well, I played basketball when I was in middle school. Uh, I kind of quit with basketball when I got to high school. I played baseball in high school up through my junior year, and then I kind of hung it up after that, cuz I got into work program my senior year. I only went to school half a day. And, uh, got out and went to work, and, uh, I mean, I didn't go to college. I was, you know, college, I'm not against college. Uh, college is, uh, a legitimate for everybody. I got out, went straight to work in the workforce, and I think I've done fair, fairly well for myself. Everybody's not meant to be in an office or in a factory. Like I say, I think there, we, we need, people need to go to college, or people need to go to college. We need doctors, we need lawyers, we need, we need accountants, we need, uh, you know, we, we need, we need people that need to go to college and get a four-year degree or a six-year degree, you know, a master's, doctorate. Uh, we need teachers. Um, but then again, there's, there's people that, to go to trade schools and learn a trade and learn how to do something with their hands, and, and some people like me that didn't do either. They go straight out in the workforce, and I mean, there's people, I, I know people right here in this county that you can get a job with either three, either of the three, and, and, and make a good living. But I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a sports guy. I'm big on sports, but at the same time, the most important thing with our schools is an education. I mean, we're, we're here to make sure our kids get educated. And I mean, sports comes after education. Well, I mean, that's plain and simple. If, if you don't make the grades, you can't play sports, you know?
Yes, sir. Well, this question, uh, I'm, I'm referring more as a, as a parent. I mean, like, have you been a booster club officer or, you know, things like that with the schools?
No, I have not. I mean, I, I, I am a sponsor for Effingham Athletics. I have not been an officer. Um, so no, I, I have not been any kind of officer in, in booster, booster club.
All right, uh, by the way, Mr. Jones, we're gonna finish this question, and we'll, we'll give you a chance to make an o- your opening statements that you missed that, and then we'll get you into the rotation.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, Mr. Johnson? Uh, which, if you'll answer that, or you already answered that question, didn't you?
I haven't. You about the sports?
Uh, just things you, you do to support the school, activities that you're involved in as a parent?
Uh, well, again, my, my oldest son, my oldest son played baseball at the high school. Uh, my wife was very involved with the baseball program behind the scenes. Uh, my business supported the baseball program as the sponsor. Um, I was on the, uh, road crew for the marching band, uh, missed last year cuz I had to have surgery. Uh, but I've been on that for two years, and I plan to be back on it, uh, for my son's senior year. And I've been involved with, uh, Maryland concessions, that kind of thing at the high school and at Ebenezer Middle School, where my youngest son played, baseball, and I've also coached basketball as a head coach, and I'm a, yeah, head coach and assistant coach for the rec department. And I've also been involved in coaching baseball teams, uh, throughout the years in both rec and travel.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
Okay, um, I've not a lot in sports, uh. Of course, I played sports in high school, which is a little while ago. But I've coached, I've coached, uh, rec ball, I coached middle school baseball, uh, officiated middle school basketball. And, uh, I think, uh, but I've been on, on the booster club in the past. Years back, I was, I was, I was a booster, the booster president. And, uh, I do the chain gang and football games. And, uh, our rotary is, is a big, big involvement in, 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 at, in schools, and I'm part of that rotary. We do a lot of things for special, special needs kids and everything, so I'm involved in that part of it. I just, I'm just very active at the schools and whatever else, whatever I can do, and, and FFA, uh, as well, young farmers, so I'm very, tried to be very active in this school to get, get involved.
Okay, all right, Mr. Jacoby Jones has, uh, joined us, so we're gonna give him a chance to, uh, introduce himself, and if you want to answer that question while you're introducing yourself, that would be great, uh. And the question was basically, uh, what kind of, uh, school activities have you been in, not while you were in school so much, but, but since you left school?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, first of all, let me apologize. I couldn't find the link to join in tonight, so we had to, uh, send some messages around to get the link, but my name is Jacoby Jones. Uh, I'm born and raised in Clio, Georgia. Uh, grandparents brought their family. My grandfather, he's been here all his life. Uh, married for four years, just celebrated four years. I have two young children of the ages of three and two, both girls, uh, daddy's little girls, uh, they'll be coming up through the Effingham County uh, educational system. My wife is from North Carolina, but I moved her down here because there's no greater school system than the Effingham school system. But anyhow, um, to give some background about myself, I went through school through George Southern University and Armstrong State University, got my bachelor's degree, and then I got my master's degree from, uh, South University uh, with a master's of business administration. Uh, just to give a background of my career, uh, I work in healthcare, but I'm working in the business department uh, as a business analyst for our strategic planning, uh, department for St. Joe's County Health System. So I worked there for a while, then transferred to some other areas, uh, which gives me that business background. Uh, I've been a youth pastor now for about ten years or better. Uh, so have a lot of involvement with young people, families, and those things. And I just really, yeah, ready to be a voice for our county as it pertains to District Three, so I'm ready to be that one to come forward and be a great representative, not just for myself, but for those in the district. And, um, I think there's been great leadership uh, with our educational system as far as the Board of Education is concerned. Um, but I believe it's time for, the time to be passed to someone else to take it to the next level. Um, as far as my involvement with sports, um, of course, in the school, I would go to the games, um, but getting out of high school, I was away from the county for my college career, uh, which took four and a half years, so I was not coming back and forth for that. Uh, but here recently, we would have young people from our church that would like to go to the games, and they couldn't afford or different things like that, for those that were not in the school system or came from another area, wanted to go or to purchase food. Uh, if I wasn't there, I was sure that they had finances to be able to purchase things. Um, so, uh, my involvement is a little indirect, but, uh, football is one of my favorite sports over any of the others. Um, but, um, that's a little bit about myself.
Okay, I, I'm gonna ask one more question, and then we'll get to the closing remarks. But this question is probably the most important one that I could ask. This was something that I asked during the District Two, uh, debate between Mr. Alford and Mrs. McNichol. We've got three challengers, and we've got the incumbent who's, uh, served on the board for several terms. So it's gonna be the same question, but with a different twist. I'm gonna ask Mr. Allen how does being a veteran member of the school board serve Effingham County parents and teachers and students the best? And then I'm gonna ask the challengers, what is it about, uh, being, I guess, for lack of a better term, an outsider or, or a, a nude person uh, with a different perspective? How will that make you, uh, more effective for the parents, teachers, and students? So we'll start with Mr. Johnson, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Allen, and then we'll close it out with Mr. Graham. So, so Mr. Johnson, you first.
Uh, yeah, so again, you know, the board's done a tremendous job. The county has grown, the school system is, is outstanding. Um, that's why every one of us live here. But it's, it, you know, the, this country was set up on people serving the community. You do your time, you, you serve the community, you do the job, and you go back and you live with your fellow, fellow members, and we've kind of gotten away from that in many different aspects and many different, uh, positions. Uh, but that's, that's my main goal, is, is to come in and, and be a new person with new ideas and fresh ideas, building on what's already there. Um, and serve in the community. Now that I'm self-employed, I have the ability to do that from a scheduling standpoint. And I just feel like that's the, that's, you know, being able to look at a situation and have different perspectives. Some, sometimes you, and it's not a bad thing, but sometimes you do kind of get the same perspectives on things when you have the same group of people. And I know we do have some new people on the board, um, this go around, uh, but that's, I, I think it's always important to, to keep the, you know, if a pond sits stagnant, you don't ever add fresh water to it. You know, fish die and everything else, and it's, it's, it's always good to keep those waters moving and, uh, just bring in new, you know, new ideas and, and as the, as the county grows, there's gonna be more influx from people in different areas that can bring different opinions and ideas to the system.
Okay, Richard Jones?
Yes, so what, what I've found, even in my career, that succession plans are lacked, uh, quite a bit. Um, Mr. Allen's done a wonderful job in his sixteen years of serving the Board of Education, and I feel that while he's here, if I were to win the election, or one of the others were to win the election, allowing him to be an advisor would really help to build upon what has already been established. A great leader, a great successor doesn't come to build their own name, but they build upon that which was laid on the foundation before there. And I feel that coming in with a new set of eyes, um, with other ideas and just being able to hear uh, the concerns of the community, of the concerns of faculty, staff, and all of that i- is, is important with the new phases that we're coming upon. Um, we understand that we have a new superintendent that will be starting as far as leadership is concerned. Uh, Coach Ford's been in the, the county as far as teaching for a long time, but coming into the superintendent role. And I'm sure that his thoughts and ideas will be similar, but very much different than some of the things that Dr. Sheraus has, has led the, the county in over these past years. And I think that allowing him to have a, a, a new team as far as the board is concerned, um, would be good. And once again, like I said, we, if, if elected, I wouldn't destroy what was put before me. I would build upon that, just like track. They, they tried to get me to run track in high school, but I wouldn't. Uh, but when they would run with the baton, one would run into a certain spot, then that other one would pass it to the next one to run the next race. Um, so I believe that knowing when time to pass the baton and, and, and while we're here, advise those who are carrying on the next, the next legacy, for lack of better words. Um, so fresh eyes, new lens, new ideas, and just being it's accessible to those who you serve. Um, and I feel that being a newcomer, uh, would really allow change, and change is needed. Our board needs to have a representation of all citizens in our county. Um, all demographics, all different cultures. And I think by allowing me to serve in District Three, I'll be able to bring a different, uh, perspective as it pertains to different culture, different, uh, uh, different outlooks.
Okay. All right, Mr. Allen?
Okay, I probably gonna repeat myself, but, uh, anyway, I think experience is one of the hardest things that you can do without. Experience. And I know they say they need some new, new blood and do, but, uh, you got a new superintendent coming in, he needs a little bit of experience on the board to help him get, get going. And we have, we have two new members on there that can, can help, help with that situation as well. It's just, everything's going great. Oh, oh, we, we're just bored, and I just think that we need to keep this board like it is, cuz it's, everything is going absolutely wonderfully. I don't see how you can get much better than going from ninety-sixty-nine percent to ninety-one percent graduation rate. And, uh, it's, it's great. As far as, uh, I represent the third district, and that's all the people in the third district. I've been here all my life in this, in this district. So I know the people, and I don't, and I'm very open to all of them. And that, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Graham?
Again, I, you know, I mean, I agree with Mr. Allen. It's hard to be experienced. Um, and none of the rest of us have any experience with the school board, uh, but at the same time, you know, uh, again, I've worked twenty years, uh, had my own business, and I didn't know much about it when I got in it either. Uh, but I got in it, I hit the ground running, and I've feel like I've done a pretty good job, uh, over the past nineteen, some nineteen and a half years, whatever it is, you know, learning it and expanding and growing and just, you gotta go into it, have an open mind, you know, have an open mind, open ears, uh, be willing to, to listen to once again, you know, faculty, administrator, you know, your teachers, your, your administrators, your, your superintendent, your, your student, parents. Um, and just try to do a, a fair and unbiased job of making decisions and supporting, uh, everybody around, you know, I mean, you're, we're here for the people. Uh, we're here for the people, again, obviously the people of District Three, but throughout the whole county. I mean, I know we have districts and, and, you know, you have somebody representing each district, but I'm not, you know, here just to represent my district. Anybody south in the county, feel free. You know, if I, if I'm elected to, if you have an issue, give me a call. You know, I'm here to be open to anybody. Um, and I mean, I'm per- repeating myself, yeah, it's hard to be experienced, but I mean, it, it's also comes a time when the experience, experience leaves and, and, and new comes in. It happens every day. It happens every day in, in offices and, and plants and, and on jobs every day. New people come in and take the reins and, and just try to continue movement in the right direction that, that they've already, you know, the, the five that's there and, and some before them have already set the stone and, and just keep moving forward in over, over direction. I mean, I've, I've had, uh, you know, I've had a couple of former board members already reach out to me, you know, let me know if I ever needed anything, you know, the, felt like I need to talk to them, to give them a call. They'd be glad to give you any kind of advice. And I just just here for the people, you know, here for, here for the county.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cripps has notified me that we've got a few extra minutes here, so I'm gonna ask another question before we get to the closing remarks. So, Mr. Jones, we'll give you the first crack at this one. Yeah, individually, a school board member has no power basically whatsoever. It takes, uh, three people to get anything done. So how would you contribute to making sure that the board and the district, uh, continues to operate in an effective and smooth manner?
All right, well, um, actually on the board for our church, so. All right. Well, I'm actually on the board for our church, so knowing how all of those work out. Um, it takes communication, it takes listening, it takes understanding, and then it takes just knowing what's going to be best. Uh, coming up in school, we learned a term interprofessional collaboration, uh, which typically just means you have a group of people, doctors, let's just use that example, who come together to collaborate what is best for their patient. So you may have, uh, an oncologist and a primary care provider and a cardiologist and a dietitian and all of these different areas where they have light in a different area, but they come together to do what is best for that patient. Uh, in saying that, most likely, everyone, and not most likely, but a hundred percent, everyone on the board would have different backgrounds, different uh, views, different ways that they see things. So coming together with inter- interprofessional collaboration to say, well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but let's look at it from the view on this side and just being able to hear one another out. Scripture tells us and all that getting get an understanding. And a lot of people listen well, but they don't understand well. And I think that understanding what the next person is saying would allow you to be able to make a decisive decision on what's going to be best for not just District Three, as, uh, the other gentleman said, Mr. Graham, but the best decision for the county as a whole. So even though we have these separate representatives, we're coming together to make a decision that would be best fit for the county. So I feel that listening, communicating, understanding, and then just sitting still and letting it digest and making that decision that's going to be best. And if the vote is not on your fair choice of what you wanted, then it is what it is. You just move on a- and and know that you made the right decision for, uh, our county.
Okay, uh, Mr. Allen?
Okay, uh, well, our board works, works together great. And that's what it takes. I mean, the board has got to work together. I've been on there sixteen years. Three seats have changed a lot in those sixteen years. Two seats, mine and Mr. Alford's have not. Other three have changed a lot. We've always managed to work and keep things going, even though sometimes we didn't agree, but we tried to keep things going. And I think by our, I'll stand by what's happened, happened in those years and where we are now. I think that it's, um, it's hard to, uh, hard to to, uh, do a lot better, I don't think. But, uh, it's, uh, it's just a matter of the board works different than any other board I've I've ever been on. I've been on a lot of boards in my life and this board here is completely different than any board I've ever been on. So many different pots of money that can't be done with here, there, and you know, it's just a lot of things is completely different in school system. And this board has has really, I think, done a good and superintendent has done a great job to get where we are. And I think, uh, Dr. Ford is gonna do a great job when he gets in there in next, next month. And I'm just looking forward to it. And, um, hope I enjoy it. I think it's a great, that I can work for the kids in this in this county. That's what my whole goal is. My my one vote is anytime, it's 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 gonna be for the kids first. And, uh, I just think that we we work together great and I hope we keep it that way.
Okay, Mr. Graham?
You know, I mean,
What was the question again? Um, you know, as an individual board member, uh, you don't have any power. You got to get three people to get anything done. So, you know, what abilities do you have to make sure that, uh, all of this, the school, the school system and the school board would continue to be a cohesive unit, uh, and just operate smoothly and effectively?
Well, you just have to learn to agree to disagree, you know? I mean, you're not gonna get everything done, uh, the way you want it done. There there's a board there with five people for reason, because everything I want might not be, I mean, not saying, I mean, I'd I'd like to think that everything I want to do is the best for the county and the students. But sometimes people get sidetracked and maybe it's not. And and maybe somebody else has their thoughts are different and that might be the best decision. And, uh, you just have to, you have to learn to agree to disagree. I mean, you're not gonna always, everything's not gonna always go your way. I mean, you have to have, you have to come in with a, again, I'm repeating myself, with open mind, you know, open ears, listen, uh, you know, get all, get all your facts and 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 look at the information that's just put before you on on what you're 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 looking at, what you're voting on. And, uh, you know, if if things don't go the way you want it to go this time around, uh, you have to, when when you leave and part ways, you you just have to all leave on good terms and 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 continue to have a good mesh and have a good relationship. And I think the board's done that in the past. Um, and come back to the next meeting and and put what's happened behind you and move forward. You know, and keep moving in the over direction.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I think you have to be willing to ask questions, um, depending on the situation or the topic. Uh, you may have to do some outside research uh, to make sure that you're familiar with what's going on and you have all the facts, again, as we stated earlier. Um, but, yeah, handling yourself professionally, because there is always gonna be disagreements when you have five heads in the room. And being able to, uh, make your argument, support what you stand for, don't waver. Uh, unless somebody can convince you, uh, that you are, you know, in the wrong or something may be better. Uh, and don't be forced to do something that you're not quite ready for. It may be a situation where you have to table for that meeting and try and come back and and discuss it the next time. Um, I think everybody on that board, the existing board and and this new board, if if the board changes, their goal is to work together and get things accomplished. That's why we're running to serve the community. So I don't think anybody goes in there with a combative, uh, attitude or spirit. Um, but you do have to be prepared. You have to be able to answer questions and just be professional about it.
Okay, all right. It's finally time to, uh, have a closing comments. And we'll go in the same order that we did with the, uh, opening remarks. We'll start with Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Uh, this has been a pleasure talking with everyone. Uh, remember, you have one privilege and that's to vote. This school system has been doing great u- under the leadership we have now. We just built a twenty-one million dollar school. That's gonna be paid for in five years with with each wash. Remember, people, vote by an Effingham County, because that's what pays the bills. Thank you on that part. Uh, hope to keep, keep things moving forward in the future. We'd like to, we have kept taxes low and done a lot. We do a lot with with the little. And, but we can't, we pay our teachers well, we pay our parents and bus drivers and all better than mo- most places pay them. And we try to do that and still ma- maintain a tax law low. So just remember, people, vote, if you if you will, in District Three, vote for Lamar. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Graham?
First off, I want to say thank you for for doing this and, uh, tell everybody again, I'm Ron Graham, District Three, Effingham County School Board. Uh, I want to thank again everybody that's already showed support in my direction up to this point. Uh, appreciate any support I get when they go to the polls. And again, I'm I'm right here, you know, I've been right here all my life, born and raised in Effingham County. Class of nineteen ninety-five, Effingham County High School graduate. I'm not going anywhere. Uh, I I'm here, I'm here for for our students, for our faculty, our teachers. I want to thank our teachers that we have now for the phenomenal job that they do. Uh, I I'd like to thank our our board members, uh, our administrators. Um, again, I'm repeating myself, but we have a wonderful school system. I mean, I, that is, that is the reason why people continue to to move into this county. And, uh, I'm just here, I'd like to have a opportunity and I'd be honored to have the opportunity to have a voice to continue moving forward and upward hill that we're headed with our school system. Try to continue to make it better.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, yeah, again, uh, thank you for the opportunity and and giving the, uh, voters a chance to listen in. Um, as I stated earlier, my interest is is serving the community, um, trying to build on the excellence that we already have in these schools that my kids have experienced and they are experiencing. My my nieces and nephews have experienced, uh, but also making it, uh, stronger for coming generations who aren't here yet, uh, who will be here after we are. And, um, you know, I just hope everybody shows up and votes and, uh, supports the candidates and, um, thank you very much for your time.
Uh, Mr. Jones, you get the last word?
Yes, sir. I would like to say thank you for this opportunity. Thank those that are listening. Uh, and thank the board that is currently in position that has served down through the years. Uh, this is the school system that I came up in and I so love Effingham County. Uh, I do want to say experience is very much needed. Uh, but understand that when every board member got their first term, they had to learn from step one. A baby doesn't come out walking. It takes experience and parents encouraging them to get them to the next point. So maybe, no, I haven't been on a school board, but I've been on a board. I I I have business experience, so and other experiences that would qualify me, because if I didn't qualify, I wouldn't have been in the running for it. And I'm excited to serve District Three, but not only District Three, but I'm excited to serve Effingham County Board of Education and Effingham County as a whole. Uh, if I am the successor, I will build upon that which was played in line before me. And I would reach out to the one that I would be the successor of to get advice and guidance on how to make certain decisions, if so, be needed. Uh, but I'm excited, uh, to serve District Three in Effingham County. I was the class president of class of two thousand and eleven for both my junior and senior year. So I am excited to give back to the community that put into me the educational tools that I needed to get both a business degree and a a bachelor's degree and a Masters of Business degree. So on June the ninth, if you've not already done your absentee ballot, I want you to vote Jacoby Jones for District Three candidate and representative for the Board of Education. I want to thank you and God bless all of you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mark, I want to thank you for moderating tonight's, uh, forum and thanks to all of the candidates for adapting to this video technology. And for everyone watching or listening, we encourage you to vote in the upcoming election. Uh, election day is June ninth with early voting beginning next Monday, May eighteenth. So thank you all and, uh, hope you have a good night. Uh, we also have our upcoming State Senate Forum at eight P M. That'll be a separate, uh, livestream on Facebook Live. So thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.